Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Need a motion, go to executive session, please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. Motion second, adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. carries for executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Okay, we need a... Need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
I shall move.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to be taking a fifteen minute recess until six o'clock. We have a public hearing scheduled at six o'clock that was posted that we have to come... Go along with, so we will be reconvening the regular meeting at six o'clock. Call the meeting back to order. Next, uh... Next is the invocation presented tonight by Reverend Johnson of the First Presbyterian Church. After their invocation, if we please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the council, thank you for your invitation to ask for God's blessing on your undertaking and your service. Shall we all pray? Oh God, who has created and redeemed us and continues to sustain us, will give you thanks for the men and women who, whether consciously so understanding or not, have accepted the responsibility of caring for your children of this community in their undertakings as public servants. Oh God, we know that their service is seldom if ever without personal cost in the form of insults and misunderstandings. And we ask that you provide them reassurance that while you never promised that doing right will be easy, doing what is right is always pleasing in your sight. Bless their undertakings this evening. May they, whether believers or not, end up following your will and do what is pleasing in your sight, which is always summarized by the idea that you love all of your children. Understanding that not all see you, as do I and others who profess faith through Jesus Christ. Nonetheless, I offer prayers for them in his name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, Charles, since you're the new man on board, lead us off, please.
...to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion in legal action. Lisa, do we have any requests? Well, you had no written request. Anybody from the public like to step forward now and please state your name and address? Seeing no movement, I'll call... Close, call to the public. Lisa?
Item eight, public hearings. Item eight A, a public hearing for submission of an application for F fiscal year 2013 Community Development Block Grant State Special Projects Fund. The public hearing will be open to receive public comment, and then we're requesting that council continue the public hearing until the March fourth, 2013 regularly scheduled council meeting. Ernie Felice will be speaking on this topic tonight. Mayor?
This time I'll open the public hearing. Ernie?
As Ms. Garcia said, Mayor Rankin, council members, staff is not prepared to proceed with action on this time. We just ask that you open the public hearing and receive comments.
Any member from the public have anything you'd like to discuss on the CDBG program? Seeing no movement, I will recess this public hearing until March fourth.
Need a motion?
No. Don't need a motion.
Mayor can continue the item until the March fourth meeting date.
So we're going to continue the hearing on March fourth, 2013.
Item eight B. Discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation dedicating the Florence Aero Modellers Park as Bowen Field.
Mr. Bowen, are you here? Why don't you meet me over there at the podium, if you would?
Mayor, can we take a motion before we do the presentation?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, on this one, we need to have a motion from... To approve the proclamation.
I'll make a... I'll make a motion to adopt a proclamation dedicating Florence Aero Modular Park in the name of Lyle Bowen, President of Florence Aero Modellers Association, as Bowen Field.
I second.
We have a motion and a second dedicate the Florence Aero Modellers Park as Bowen Field. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're almost legal.
This is a proclamation Florence Aero Modellers Park dedicated as Bowen Field, whereas Lyle Bowen has played a vital role in the creation of Florence Aero Modellers Association and the development of an air park, and through his passion and commitment that both came to fruition. Whereas Lyle Bowen formed the Model Air Club in 2006, known as the Florence Aero Modellers, and has been president since its inception. Whereas Lyle Bowen worked with the town council to develop an aviation park on a portion of BLM land, which is completed with the assistance of various donations, and it was dedicated in March of 2008. Whereas Lyle Bowen has worked diligently with the town council to continue improvements to the park, which is now known... Which now includes a parking lot, runway, pit, primal flight area, and is sought after... And is a sought-after park in both local and nationally. Whereas Lyle Bowen has maintained the principle that the association shall be a place where families can be involved and in an activity together. And his continued support of... And from the town of Florence is the forefront of all activities planned and held at the air park. Mr. Bowen's inspiration and dedication as president has given many individuals and family a place to enjoy the hobby of flying model aircraft, as well as be involved in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of Florence do hereby proclaim the Florence Aero Modellers Park will now be known as Bowen Field.
Where's the cordless? We don't have it?
Oh, let me see.
Let's get the cordless out.
You've got to talk into the mic or the television. My screen won't pick it up. If it works.
Testing one-two. Testing one-two.
You know, Lyle, you remember when you and Dick Sanders come over and got on me? I was the mayor before. Lyle and Councilman Dick Sanders brought up the idea of putting in the Aero Field out there. And I told him I thought it was a great idea, not knowing exactly what was going to happen out there. But we can see, if any of you have been out there, it's really nice. Lyle, we're really happy for you. We're proud to name that field after you. You've done a service to a lot of people here in Florence, provide a lot of entertainment. We've also got another business going to be starting up because of that. A hobby shop going to be going into town where people can buy the model planes. And also in the future, we're hoping to have a car track out there also. So Lyle, is there anything you'd like to say?
First of all, I've got to say, I didn't expect any of this tonight. I didn't even know about it. We were out eating, and we get the phone call that I should come down here to the town council meeting. And here I am. So it's, uh... And I see all these club members and friends here that just, uh... They say a person shouldn't have a tear in your eye, but I do. So, at any rate, from the standpoint of...
You're not supposed to be looking over there.
You've only got two minutes, Lyle.
Yeah, I've only got two minutes. You know, I've never enjoyed the association that I've gone through with Lisa, the town, the whole... Everyone that I've been in touch with. The consul, Richard Sanders says, "Lyle, you need to start an airplane club." My story is, yes, I started. It was me. Then I got five to make a club. I reported to Lisa this last year, last spring, that we had around twenty... I'm sorry, thirty pilots that had a Florence address. That number, I don't know, I've had two more yesterday. It must be thirty-five or something like that. And this means that people are moving to Florence, they're buying homes, they're using the facilities here in every way possible. And that is a great thanks, I guess, for me, for everyone making it just what I never thought would ever materialize into what it is. And I thank you all deeply. So, I guess that's all I got to say. We have a fun fly this weekend, and, uh... I've got to say this, when we dedicated... When we dedicated... Because something happened very important today. When we dedicated the field, uh... Back a few years ago, we had the jet flyers there. They have not returned because they wanted to see our runway better, because they don't like small pieces of rocks, gravel, whatever, in their turbine jets. Today, this afternoon, we had one of those pilots back today, and he is so thrilled. He joined the club today, and he's so excited about what was just done this last week by resurfacing that runway. So I think we're going to see more turbine jet flyers coming too, so...
I thought he was a politician there for a minute. Just kept going and going and going. Lyle, on behalf of the town council, myself, please accept this proclamation. And over here, you've already seen it, but there's our sign. And now what I'd like to do is to get you and your members to come on over to the sign, and let's take a picture for the paper. Paper has it here. All the members of the club, come on over. Oh, there's a bunch of them.
Blue. Yeah.
You better get behind it.
Bill Foster.
We might want to stand behind it so we can get...
He took it off.
If we've got enough room there.
He got it up high enough, and I think...
You got your wide-angle lens, Mark? Okay. And Lyle, you're going to be right in the middle. How come the tallest guy's way over there when he should be behind it? Get over here, Ron. Get over here, behind the sign. Somebody shorter than you stand on that side. Okay, Mark. Okay, I think that's it. Again, Mr. Bowen, thank you very much on behalf of the town of Florence.
Item nine, consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by one single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of the town of Florence 2013 general plan amendment application and hearing schedule. Item B, approval of a resolution number 1,379-13, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the town clerk and entitled 2013 to 2023 land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plans, and impact fee study for the town of Florence, Arizona. C, authorization to purchase new Scuba from L.N. Curtis to outfit the new ladder truck in an amount not to exceed $39,127.30. Item D, authorization to dispose of a 2000 Chevrolet van that has outlived its useful life, and rescind the action for disposal of the 1998 Ford van from October 15, 2012. Item E, appointment of Town Manager Charles Montoya to serve as the Citizens Merit System Head Representative Board Member on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, police and fire local boards for a term expiring February 4, 2017. Item F, appointment of Wilbur Freeman to serve as Citizen Representative Board Member on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, police and fire local boards for a term expiring February 4, 2017. Item G, ratification of the reappointment of Cory Pine to serve as an Employee Representative Board Member to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fire Local Board with a term expiring February 4, 2017. Item H, approval of the January 7th, January 9th, January 14th, and January 15th, 2013 town council meeting minutes. Mayor and member of council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council have anything you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Any member of the public have anything they'd like to see taken off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Sergeant?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, unfinished business. Item A, ordinance number 591-13, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the town code Title VII, Chapter 72, by adding Section 72.04 concerning restrictions on vehicle weight. First reading was held on January 22, 2013.
Mr. Manato, you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Pursuant to the discussion that we had at the last meeting on this ordinance, our magistrate Catherine Kaiser included some additional information in the request for council action form so that you could get a little bit better idea of how the process goes about of transferring certain fine surcharges and assessments to the state of Arizona as per state law. The, uh... The requirement to transfer a portion of the fines and/or the surcharges and assessments is one that is given to the court by the Arizona Supreme Court through the administrative office of the court. And so, this is not a situation where the court really has any choice in the matter. Basically, they operate on a system that requires them to input the disposition of every charge that is brought in the Florence Municipal Court once there's been an adjudication or some type of disposition. And at that moment, the, as I understand it, the administrative office program will basically show them or tell them how each assessment and surcharge is going to be broken out and transmitted back to the state of Arizona. So, I think, by and large, the easier way to think about it is, by enacting this as a local ordinance, the Florence Municipal Court will be able to keep and give to the town general fund the base fine that pertains to these violations, and then the surcharges and/or the assessments will go to the state. And so that's what magistrate Kaiser explained under the portion of the fiscal impact. In other words, let's say a driver incurred a weight violation. The fine was $100, the base fine. And then when all the state mandated assessments are brought to bear, it's $252.60 would be the actual total amount to be paid by the driver. The town would keep the base fine of $100, and the rest would go to the state. And so that's what we can do if we make this a local ordinance. If it's a state law ordinance as cited on the citation, then essentially the state gets all of it. There's a very small amount that could be retained by the town of $10, and that's it. So, that's kind of how it works in terms of the fine breakout.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by... Or I need a motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 591-13, vehicle weight restrictions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 591-13. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 11, new business. Item A, discussion approval disapproval of entering into an operator agreement with Southwest Environmental Utilities LLC. Madam Mayor, scarry, Mayor, and members of council, you have a amended draft that was handed out on the floor tonight.
Council members, this is the time we've decided we're going to go with what I see as a great and vast improvement to the town of Florence by entering into this amended operating agreement with Southwest Environmental Utilities LLC. It'll be in the Kelvin Road, Highway 79 area, south of town. And the legal description has been attached to the operating agreement. And I would like to see this passed. Anybody have any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll...
Tommy?
I'll add something to that. And, kind of to take some of the ownership on myself as well, not exclusive to you. But, basically, I wanted to state a few misconceptions and some things that bring me to the, uh... To the point of making my decision. And what I had to look at, basically, I had to ask these questions. Does it impact the existing citizens' rates? And it does not. There's a lot of misconception out there that it may. Does it impact the existing citizens' future water supply? No more than any other type of development that would go on out there. How does it affect the neighboring properties? We haven't had any objections. In fact, we've had some support from the neighboring property owners. What is the benefit to the town? What I see is a potential for economic development that Mr. Johnson is looking at putting his money towards investing towards our future. And it's a gamble that he's taking. Would we be able to do that ourselves? I don't believe that our town is in the position to go out there and put, uh... The backbone infrastructure of something like this to stimulate that type of development. And the final thing that I would answer to any of the citizens that would question why council could support this type of an action, my question to them would be, do you plan on living out there? Because if you don't plan on living out there, then it's not going to affect you at all. If you, you know... And anybody that wants to live out there, you know, I'm sure they're going to do their due diligence in looking at the community that they're going to live in, just the same way that they would look into, what kind of police protection am I getting? What kind of fire protection? Where are my schools at? What are my taxes? What are my water rates? What are my utility rates? They're going to do that research themselves. And then it's their choice whether they want to live there or not. But as far as an economic driver, this has a lot of potential. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Bill?
Well, I just agree with Councilman Selaya. He pretty much covered my thoughts on it. And I think it's going to be a real asset for Florence.
Anyone else? Valerie?
Our position hasn't changed. I still think the town should control their own utilities.
There is a point I would like to make, I'm sorry, but that brings up a point. Every town in Pinal County is... Has private water, except Eloy and us. We've got about half and half. The town has part of it. Johnson Utilities has the other part. But virtually every other town in Pinal County is supplied through private entities. And, uh... So this isn't something that we're doing that's unheard of.
Okay. First of all, there are several items in the operating agreement that I'm not really fond of. However, the main thing I look at are the people that voted to put me in office. And I have a lot of them calling me, a lot stopping me on the street. They overwhelmingly do not wish it. Therefore, I will stand by my voters on this call.
I've got to express a few things. A letter to the editor in the paper last week accusing me, maybe not by name, of being on the take from Mr. Johnson. Come forward with proof of that. Don't write it in the paper, Mr. Sheridan. Come forward and the proof with that. Another thing I'd like to say is that if you don't want to live out where George is going, don't live out there. The people in Anthem ought to be aware that if it wasn't for Mr. Johnson's Utility Company, they wouldn't be living here today. We didn't have the money then, we don't have the money now, to put the services in that they needed at the time element that they needed it. We have no control over the water rates. The water rates are set by the Corporation Commission. The town will not become involved in that. Do your due diligence. If you want to move in there, fine. If you don't, that's fine, too. I see a whole bunch of acreage out there sitting on the road to Florence. It's going to be the Southern Route, Highway 70... 79, Rose Lurk Junction. Could be a gateway, or continued gateway, because we have the monastery down there a little ways farther, which has a lot of traffic that goes through. I take a look at Main Street. I take a look at the opportunity for other businesses to come into town because of the population is here that will work, that will shop here, buy here locally. We can't get it. When I came on the council in 1996, we went to different grocery store chains trying to get a grocery store here in Florence. Every one of them would tell you the same thing. You show me 5,000 rooftops, and we'll build you a store. We don't have 5,000 rooftops. I don't see 5,000 rooftops in the real near future without somebody has the gall to go ahead and try something and get it in. We need rooftops. There was a complaint given to me that said, "Look at what happened when Johnson Utilities had the E. coli report." And their response, if anybody would like to, there is a copy of the whole file in our office. If you want to come in and look at it, please do so. As far as I can see, Johnson Utilities did everything above board on that. And there's letters and information in there that you will be able to see the same information on. And we were talking with developers, and I see Mr. McCray, representative here, and I see Mr. Warner is here. All four property owners out in that area have agreed that this is the way to go. They couldn't afford... The people couldn't afford the price of the land if they had to put in their own system and had to wait for the town to do it. We would have to go out to bond. We... And I don't know if our bonding capacity would handle it. I think it might, but it would take so long. And I know George don't like this, okay? But I'm going to tell it anyway. The Main Street program in Florence, Arizona, wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for him. He's the one that gave half of what it took to cost to implement the Main Street program. Wouldn't have been for him, the Main Street program would not have been here. So... And he doesn't like... He doesn't like that stuff. But I think it's important to the people to know that when somebody says they're doing something good for Florence, they are. And how many developers have we talked to that have a grand scheme of things and never works out? Mr. Johnson is a proven commodity. When he says he's going to do something, he does it. So at this time, I need a motion?
Wait.
Or a care?
I still need to talk also.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question if I could ask you. Would you be open to inserting a buyback provision in the event that you no longer controlled Southwest for any reason? Or if Southwest did not complete construction in, say, like, five to 10 years?
Mayor and Councilman, I'm George Johnson. I'm the applicant. Councilwoman, what was that question again?
If there, if there was ever a time where you no longer controlled Southwest for any reason, would you be willing to put a buyback provision in the agreement?
Buyback from?
From Southwest.
To the Florence?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's in our agreement.
But with a price set, like?
You can't put a price on that now. That'd be impossible.
For what? What I'm trying to say is?
For one reason, we're negotiating with the power companies, and we're gonna have to spend somewhere between a million one and a million eight just to bring power in for that whole project. And all the other expenses, I can't tell you what they all are. I can't tell you what they'll be. And I would not put a price on it. At this time, I don't think it'd be fair. I think that'd be open to fair negotiations, and we've always had that between Florence and Johnson. So, I think that would have to come up at the time that that came up. But it's in the agreement that you people have the right of first refusal. And I think at this time, that's all we can do.
Thank you.
Ruben? Yeah, I'd like to point out that there is numerous homes that are south of the Central Arizona Project that are in that area. And it's amazing on Saturdays and Sundays, the number of people who drive into town over to the big water tank on Park Street, bringing in a tank and having to fill up water because they don't have any running water at their house. So, they have to build a tank, put that in, and that's where they get their water sources. What's interesting is here's our first opportunity as a town and as a community to actually have an infrastructure. We will be able to put the water out there. We'll be able to put the wastewater treatment plant. Even though it's not ran by the town of Florence, it'll be available. And we always talk about, like the mayor mentioned, about growth. You know, you can't have growth without infrastructure. And if you wanna see the grocery store here, we have to reach that limit or that threshold of 5,000 homes. And this gives us an opportunity, and I think that's what's really important, is we need to develop an infrastructure, and here's an opportunity for us.
Just, I have one, just one correction. You guys keep saying to have a grocery store here. What is Safeway? It may not be in the core of town, but it's in Florence. So, just wanted to make that correction.
You're right.
I wanna give Safeway some props for being in Florence.
You're right. I stand corrected. Any other discussion? Dan?
Mayor and council, just one other comment that I wanted to add that hasn't been brought up, and we felt that it needed to be brought up. I think everyone in town, and we've been around several different businesses in town, and everyone's looking for the growth that the council's mentioned downtown. But there's a significant disadvantage right now on if the town even were to provide services down there. Not to mention everyone saying, hey, the town doesn't have the cost to do it. Well, that's on top of the town also charging additional $5,000 per lot, which is another $15,000 per acre down there that, right now, on the north side of town in Anthem, the individuals, I don't feel, are flowing down into Main Street. But the current developers down there do not have the same impact fees. Ours is 1,900, and that hasn't come out, and I didn't see that in the papers at all. That alone, down to the project, would make it economically unfeasible for any of the developers, including, that's some of the reasons why you have support from Mr. McCray and Mr. Warner here, which I'm sure they'll be glad to come up and talk to themselves. Not only to mention, with your guys' current operating agreement, and the town already has in place right now, with Johnson Utilities, we're paying the town approximately $125,000 a year from the water and sewer that's happening in the Anthem area, that the town benefits off of that. Not to mention, you're gonna see sales tax from construction, commercial sales, bed taxes, and various other approval and permitting fees that wouldn't be to the town if this growth doesn't happen down in that area. So, long story short, we feel that it's gonna be an absolute benefit to the town of Florence. We have numerous other areas in Johnson Utilities. There's only 20% growth built out right now. I would be more than happy to stay focused in that area, but we really feel that this is something that will be a huge benefit to the town of Florence, and we look forward to partnering with the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. This time, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We enter into an operating agreement with Southwest Environmental Utilities LLC.
The amended agreement with the attached legal?
As amended.
With the attached legal.
Right. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the operating agreement with Southwest Environmental Utilities LLC as amended with the legal description attached.
Requesting a roll call vote.
Aye.
Pass Senator Selaya.
Aye.
Pass Senator Woodridge.
Nay.
Pass Senator Walter.
I still have a few questions and reservations, so at this time, I'm going to say yes.
Pass Senator Montagnas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ted.
Nay.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll see.
Thank you. Call to the public. This is the second call to the public. For comment on issues within the jurisdiction of town council, council rules may limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of council should not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Any member of the audience have anything they'd like to bring up? Seeing no movement, I'll call, close to the public. Call to the council. Tara?
Um, I have... I have nothing at this time.
Bill?
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody about the home tour Saturday, and they're also having the fly-in out at the airfield. And then, this Sunday's also the prison run.
I don't have anything.
Tommy?
Just some comments of appreciation for the efforts for our fire department. Most recently, we've had a couple of incidents. Let's see, what else was there? Oh, welcome our new town manager to his first meeting, and that's pretty much all I got.
Ruben?
I think one of the important things we're looking at nationally is we recently lost an American hero by the name of Chris Kyle, who is currently known as the top American sniper. He was part of a SEAL team. And he was recently killed in Texas, and I had an opportunity to speak with him. And he talked greatly about community. When I met him back in September, you know, he mentioned about growing up, and he talked about how he was a part of the community as he grew up. And that's what's important to understand, you know, he doesn't wanna be remembered as, I'm the top sniper, you know, and how many kills did I officially have? His thing was, when he got back to the United States, was to be a part of the community. And here, he was trying to help a fellow veteran who was from his community to better himself and to deal with post-traumatic stress disorder. And it's, to some unfortunate circumstances, the individual used a weapon that he had on him to use to take care of Chris Kyle, as well as another individual that was trying to help him. So, you know, but it was really important, when you talk to Chris about how growing up was important and being a family man and raising kids and taking them hunting and fishing. And I think that's one thing we should always look back at, is what do we do for our kids here? How are we teaching them to grow and be a part of our community?
Tom?
Yeah, I would like to also welcome our town manager here, because this is his first council meeting, and welcome. The other thing I wanna let you know is also, with Home to Remember at the museum next to L. B.'s Restaurant on Saturday from 10 to 4, will be the Tom Mix car, the cord, fully restored, back here for the first time since it left Florence after Tom Mix was killed in it. Welcome.
You know, Tom, we brought up about the fires that we've had here in town. I'd like to bring up, talk about the people that were involved with the fires. A citizen out in Florence Garden, or in Caliante, rather, helped a lady out of her home. Two citizens, young men here in Florence, walking by the house fire that occurred yesterday over on 16th Street, did the same thing. They saw the fire, went up and pounded on the door, and got that lady out safe. I think I sort of like about Florence, you might have different political views, you might not like what somebody's views are, but when it comes right down to it, if they need help, you're there, no matter who they are. And that's one of the good things about Florence. And chief, you do need to take it back to your crews that the council appreciates the job that they did on both situations. The proper training, thank goodness, we had it. We just need to keep up with it. We're really proud of the way they did. The last thing I'm gonna say tonight is I think we took a step in the right direction for improving the quality of life in Florence and economic development opportunities. The proper economic development opportunities. And I think that we all hope to see this happen. With that, good night. You need a motion?
Make a motion. Will you adjourn?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.